Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, June 26, 2018, now called to order at approximately 7:00 P.M. This meeting is being recorded and broadcasted live by local access program. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording tonight's meeting? There being none, please rise and join us in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the planning board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. First item on our agenda is an A&amp;R plan for 15 and 19 Paul Street for Bryan Brotherton.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Todd Broder, sitting next to my brother-in-law, Bryan Brotherton. So Bryan lives on Paul Street and looking to acquire some of the backland behind his house that currently belongs to his neighbor at 19 Paul Street. As you can see, there's a, yeah, Matt just scribed over the property line there. It's a pretty short distance between the back of the house and the property line now. It's just, will give them a little bit of extra room in their backyard. So both lots after that will still be conforming. It's not meant to be, you know, a new build of a lot or anything of that nature. It's just adding a piece to the existing 15-Paul Street property. So it's that back. There's no new structures.
I already did that. Both got the frontage. Both got one increase in square footage. Nick, any questions? Scott?
The shed's yours already?
The larger one is.
Okay.
The one in the back. The small one is his, which is, both are movable.
Okay, so it's temporary.
Yes, his is a vinyl plastic shed that can be moved and also mine can be moved, which is mine. Mine is also within the variances.
Okay. And that drainage system is pre-existing?
Yeah. Yes.
I got nothing.
John? Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the subdivision?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you.
There's only a, the only thing I had was HSTL put four signature lines on it, so we'll have four of the members sign it.
No problem.
Right. Yep.
First four get signed. Yes. Well, I just got the sign. There's only four lines. We got one copy for you, too.
Okay. I have a copy myself. Multiple meetup.
You need to sign one of them?
Yeah. Yeah, sure.
Yeah. Taking two of the girls in charge.
Okay.
Hang on, nice, all set. Since I've recorded one, the model at the registry, and you're good to go.
Thank you.
He's coming in.
Thank you.
Hey, we have a 7 o'clock public hearing. The applicant is Leif Azuni requesting site plan approval under Section 3.2.6.0 of the Auburn zoning bylaws to operate a dental office with associated parking on property located at 838 Southbridge Street. This hearing has been continued from June 12, 2018. The applicant present?
Good evening. My name is Imad Zerain from Development Zerain. Assistant engineer with me is Dr. Leif Azuni, the applicant.
Rachel, you got it.
As you recall, last time we were before you, we presented a site plan with similar what we're showing right now, about 1,700 square feet of dental office. Dr. Leif operates a business in town, right on Southbridge Street, and he'd like to rehab this building and move into it. So the last time we were here, we had access to the site through Tinker Hill Road. Since we presented the plan, we found out that Tinker Hill is actually not a public street. It's in a disrepair, the actual pavement. There's an existing curb cut on Southbridge Street, so we've resubmitted revised plans, closing the access off Tinker Hill, and just have, use the existing curb cut that's on Southbridge as it currently exists. We've received, since we came before you, we had received peer review comments, which we believe we addressed them all. We're still showing eight parking spaces, as we had shown before. Everything pretty much similar to what we had the previous plan, except the curb cuts changed from Tinker Hill Road to Southbridge. We had obtained the ZBA approval for rendering more than 15% of impervious prior to revision of the plan, and since we updated the plan, we, there was an addition of some impervious. So we went back to, we refilled the ZBA, and we obtained approval last Thursday. So we're before you with the revised site plan.
Your driveway opening on Southbridge Street, what's the width of that?
It's...
See, back by the corner of the house, it's 24. Well, it's probably 2.6.
It's actually pretty wide. It's about 50 feet wide. Currently, we're not proposing to change it, but it's about that, yeah, that wide. With sidewalks on either side of the curb cut.
So Matt, we can't allow egress or entrance onto a private bike?
We can, depending on the circumstances. This was changed for more than just that reason, I believe. The applicant had wanted to at least maintain this curb cut while keeping Tinker Hill as an access point.
No, I was just looking at if we still had a, an exit on that road might make it easier than going on and off Southbridge Street in that area. Do you want to add to the yard to this peer review?
Sure. Through the chair, there was a peer review done through Burton Engineering. You and I have been communicating about the results of that, and we did get final feedback from Burton Engineering today. We were satisfied with the, with the plan as is. This first review involved the egress on Tinker Hill Road. The second review involved egress on Southbridge Street. Turns out that the drainage system would still handle what was proposed the first time. It didn't need to be changed with the new egress, see, out of impervious. It did not warrant any changes to the system. One of the, he still had one comment in his review letter. He's curious about how vehicles would back out of the spot, like, as if you're turning into the site, as if one of the two spaces in the front cars backing out would be backing into, would be backing into the drive and blocking cars from coming into the site. That was one, like, safety concern that they had. But I, from what I understand, that spot would be used for ADA compliance only and then one next spot for Mr. Azuni himself.
The ADA spot is further away, and the spot for the doctor would be, they're like the closest space.
So there will be a spot for the doctor, one handy guy.
Is this one here, and this is the ADA spot.
Six in the back and a couple of those employees.
And customers, which, they come on a, on a appointment basis. Hopefully, we'd like to do the work this, this summer, you know, try to rehab the building.
No, I just like, I mean, if it could have been, see, I would like to see one where you could exit at least onto Tinker Hill, and I'll just make it easy, and that would help in some of the coming in and out, and the other car back in, which is probably not going to occur a lot, but.
Correct, yes.
We'll just make it flow better. If there's absolutely, I mean, they could come back and apply for that.
I mean.
You know, at some point after you're there, you could come back and ask if you might want to do that.
Yeah, the access.
Yeah. See how it works.
After we all re-operate.
Nick, any questions?
None.
Scott?
I agree with you, the Tinker Hill, but a lot of their businesses have their only entrance on, like, 20 as well.
Yes.
I understand that. Is six enough in back? Six parking spots, is that enough for the?
I mean, it's basically by appointment only, the employees, so we wouldn't expect this thing to, to have more than, more than a couple of spots for a, at a certain time. People come in and out, in and out, as they do the, it's only one doctor operating.
Okay. Through the chair, Matt, is that enough? Is that compliant with the?
It needs very many parking.
It does.
By zone, yes.
Because normally, we don't like to see any egress onto a side for a business in front, but in this case, because it's 12, and it's, so anything you could do to prevent curb cuts or activity there would be good. John?
I'm all set.
I'm okay.
I'm okay.
I just had one comment, Mr. Chairman, um, listed in regards to mass DOT. The applicant and Mr. Zerain are is aware that there has to be, a certain application has to go to DOT.
You have to file for a lease, for the change of use, which is formally basically is an occupation, which we find that.
So I'd recommend, Mr. Chairman, that be considered as a condition of approval. Otherwise, I'm satisfied with the photometric plan that was submitted. Also, the landscaping seems, turns out, so I'm satisfied with it.
Hey, do we have a motion to approve? Motion to close the hearing. Are there any abutters in the audience that would like to speak to this? There being none, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I make the motion to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to approve the project?
I make the motion to approve the project with DOT condition that Matt mentioned earlier.
The condition being that the DOP approved the curb cut.
And standard conditions.
And standard conditions.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Chairman, while the applicant is here, do you want to discuss any construction hours?
What, the standard seven, eight?
We have been amending our construction hours to be 7 to 3:30, Monday through Friday, with 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on Saturday, with none on Sundays or holidays.
If that was seven, oh, was it, there wasn't seven to five? That was just, that's what I wanted.
That was, well, plus that was the mall, where there's no direct abutters.
So seven?
This site doesn't have direct abutters on the left or right, but it does have one residence right behind it.
Up in the back, yes. Where are they?
Sure. So I hadn't amended the hours yet, but through Mr. Regan's recommendation, we were looking at 7 to 3:30 on Friday. 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon Saturday, with no work Sundays or holidays. It's a direct.
Now, the house in the back is kind of close. On this one, I'd like to keep it at 8 to 4:30, Monday through Friday, and Saturday, 8 to 12.
Do you think they redid Route 12, 8 to 4:30? Probably did Route 12, 7 to 3:30.
That was my. Nick? You okay with the standard construction hours that we amended, and it would be 7 to?
3:30.
3:30, and 8 to 12 on Saturdays.
And just the outside or also the inside, too?
Outside.
Outside, inside you can work. You okay with that? Scott? John?
Okay, very good.
Thank you so much.
I'll have the decision drafted for signature at our July 10 meeting. Once signed, there's no appeal period on site plan review. You may have to wait for the ZBA's appeal period before we get our stamped in, but otherwise, you're also in the planning process.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hey, we have a 7:05 public hearing. The applicant is Longwood Development Corporation requesting site plan approval under Section 9.4.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws to construct an industrial building on a construction yard on property located at 17 Mill Street. This hearing has been continued from June 12 at the applicant's request. The applicant is present tonight, and Rachel, you have the names.
You have mine. I'm sorry. Attorney Todd Broder on behalf of the applicant. With me tonight's Ken Perro, President of Longwood Development Corporation, and Bob Murphy is the site engineer on this project, is behind me. So we're talking to you tonight about 17 Mill Street. It's a vacant property. It's been vacant as long as I can remember. It's land adjacent to, it's currently operated as SEER Electric Business there. There's a National Grid station in between, excuse me, on the other side of the property. So this is the vacant land, which has been grassed and mowed forever. We're talking about property that's in the general industrial zone. It's also in an aquifer protection zone, too. Mr. Perro has the property under agreement, and it's all subject to permitting, which we've successfully gotten through ZBA and a number of permits that we needed there. We're in front of conservation. We've left that open so that we could get some feedback from this group before going back there potentially tomorrow night, depending upon how our conversation goes tonight. There are only a few residences in the neighborhood. I know one of the abutters is here tonight. He's sort of down the street on the, on the corner with it, closer to the turn, and there's a residential abutter almost directly across the street. Mr. Perro's spoken to her. There hasn't been any, any opposition to the project that's been brought to our attention from that particular neighbor. So Ken, Ken owns and operates Perro Construction, essentially a home building and excavation services company. They do some snowplow services, particularly for the city of Worcester. He's been in business, it's a family business with he and his son and a few other employees. They've got about five or six employees at any given time. What's proposed is to construct a 3,500-square-foot, essentially metal building with three garage bays and an office space in the front of the building. So it's meant to allow dump trucks and pickup trucks, et cetera, to pull right into the bay so that they can be secure at night. The site has, again, inside storage for machinery as well, tools and equipment. There is some desire to have some outdoor storage, and outdoor storage would be both of machinery and of materials. So in terms of machinery, we're talking about extra snowplow blades that may not be in use at a particular time, pickup trucks like we talked about, excavator buckets, and tag trailers. As far as materials for storage, pieces of granite curbing, couple of loads of gravel, locks, some PVC pipe at any given time. There's no de-icing materials involved with the operation at all. You know, he does plowing, he doesn't do sand salt for the, for the city, it's just plowing. There is a need for a well on-site, where we're going to connect to Town Sewer, so there's a plan as part of the submission that goes up Mill Street towards Millbury Street, and has, kind of snakes around trees that are involved, and that's already been worked through with DPW. So the site will be served by Town Sewer, and we'll also tie in, Ken's going to tie in the SEER Electric Building, which is also private sewer service right now. That work will be done, you know, within the property itself and not in the right way. There's an onsite storm scepter, stormwater system with oil water separators, and we've gone through peer review and satisfied them as far as stormwater management requirements. There's onsite parking for, for employees and equipment. Ken's business doesn't have customers coming to the, to the site. This is not, it's not showroom of any sort. This is an operations center for the, for the crew. As I said, we went to zoning board of appeals. We had several different items that we needed, including front yard setback relief. The building's 27 feet off of Mill Street, where the requirement's 30. The ZBA granted us that, that variance from the front yard setback. Also granted us variances to have the construction yard, essentially classified according to Caleb as a construction yard in the GI District. We went through comments with DCG early on, before we even went to ZBA. Again, we've been to ZBA, we're in front of Conservation Commission currently. Just a few other site features. The snow storage is scheduled to be in the front of the site. There's wetlands in the back, so there was a desire to keep the snow storage away from the wetland area. There's a slight slope back to the rear of the property, so there's a small retaining wall in the back. There's going to be some curving there to make sure that drainage stays, water stays on-site. Any storage of the materials, blocks and the like, will be behind the building, so in that rear space. Ken will have security cameras on-site, very low levels of lighting, and it'll be adequate landscaping, we feel like, in the front of the property to try to dress up the, the front of the site, so there's a bunch of trees and plantings that we see on the, on the site plan. That's about it from my perspective, but we're happy to answer questions. Again, Bob Murphy's here, the site engineer, to answer any of those type of questions.
Is the yard going to be closed in, you know, the area where you got the buckets and the plows and all of that stuff?
There is a section on the backside of the building, on the side of the building, that I plan on storing stuff, so it's kind of out of sight as much as possible.
Yeah, because it is a, there are some residences there still, and, you know, regardless if it's allowed by RAIT, it's still, you know, they've been there for a long time, and, you know, we try to make it so it's friendly to everybody.
Even the back section, if you look where it says water quality swale, that back section, a 10-foot area right there, you know, fencing that whole back section from the front corner over 10 feet down along the line, right, right to the back corner, so that if you're driving from the Mill Street side heading towards the 20 side, you won't be able to see anything behind the building, and that's where most of the stuff is.
So most of the front will be pretty clear?
The front will be clean, it's going to be all landscaped and grassed.
And there's an existing vegetative buffer between the National Grid equipment area. Does that stay there?
Yeah, pretty much. Maybe a branch or two that's hanging over too close will come down, but the rest of it, I think, is on National Grid's property anyways.
Right. You got your question, Matt? Through the chair, um, the type of fences proposed on the outside, I didn't find that new. Is there a spec for the fence? I'm not showing it. Vinyl fence?
I would put a vinyl fence, yeah.
All around?
Not the whole entire property. I wasn't planning on doing the whole property, but just that whole section right there.
This, it's cross-hatched?
No, the other, the backside of the building.
Yeah, to the extent possible, the storage of, you know, equipment or materials that, you know, we're worried about would be inside the building. I'm not sure how many people could make off with heavy concrete blocks, and we're going to have security cameras on the building. Ken's business is mostly out in the field, so his machinery that he has generally stays out in the field. It's pickup trucks and a dump truck or two that, that end up back at, at the yard at night, so he's got excavators and whatnot, they don't come back to the, to the.
No, even the other businesses are pretty neat there, so we'd just like to keep. Nick, any questions? Scott?
Just in the peer review, the comments to the ADA compliant parking spot, and I get that it's, you know, really going to have customers coming in there.
The revised site plan that just went in today to Burton does show an ADA compliant, ADA spot, handicap spot, I should say. We did, we did go back and forth with them today, and they, they sent an email at about 2:00 or so, and said, okay, you've addressed everything.
That's all I got.
John?
Just that, this comments all through this peer review, but he said he just got another one back, which I haven't seen. There's a bunch of stuff in here.
Matt said that most of it's all, all of it's been.
Yeah, if you want, Mr. Chairman, I'll just read the 2:00 email right from the peer review consensus. Two main concerns regarding a second review were parking adequacy and the infiltration system. Provided revisions, which will be dated today, which I, it still didn't come through yet, addresses these concerns, and at this time, unless directed by the board, I don't think a third review is warranted, as I believe the items have raised and been addressed. I just have to see the plan here.
Is there any public comment? Would you state your name, please?
Bob Carlson, 26 Mill Street, Mr. Chairman and Board, my wife, and I do have several different things that we're worrying about, and that's trucks running to warm up because they're talking about 60. to warm up because they're talking about 16-wheel trucks. And it was mentioned at the zoning board about tractor trailer and diesel smell, lighting, is that going to be an all-night affair? The driveway, it's supposed to be a 25-foot wide driveway. And then we're worried about the effect of the well, because there's going to be three wells within 75 feet. My well is just down the road in front of where they're putting their well. So I've got a problem with that, and I've been addressing that to the Conservation. And the construction debris laying outside is going to have an impact on the value of our properties.
Well, I questioned him on that. He is allowed by right, not, this isn't even special for that.
Correct.
To do it, and that's why I asked, you know, would he keep a fence and would he try to keep it.
Then is it going to be tree plantings, something that makes the property justified? Because the oversize of the building does not warrant the property. If you take a right by, you'll see the size of the lot, not what you see on the screen, but as.
But how big is that lot?
14,630 square feet.
So the building's only 3,500.
Point three-three.
3,500 square feet.
We chopped it down.
Building's about, only about 30% of the lot.
So about 11,000 feet left over.
We had initially designed a 4,000 square foot building, but had trouble meeting the setbacks, and so this was sort of a compromise plan when we went through ZBA.
Can we condition the running of the trucks?
I would request that.
With the business of the cannabis?
Yeah, you're talking about business operation.
The running of the trucks and stuff, I would say, would have to be code enforcement or border health and, or both. The well, would I say, would be border health also. And what were the other ones, Bob?
Yes, I do, I just worry about the impact. That small little neighborhood with just a couple of houses left. It's like the end of a small development that's historical, and it's going to be taken over by.
Get the zoning allowed.
It's a general industrial zone.
And the other issue I have, sir, is the fact that it's people that come in from other towns that don't live there, that don't put up with it. They can do what they want, and then they leave, and then we're stuck with the situation. Thank you.
Mr. Carlson's comments on landscaping, on plantings, I'm counting. Planted, a lot of new plantings, and none of this looks like it's existing.
No.
There's something there.
At least 19 on the front.
Including a nice buffer on this side should reduce view in this direction. And this little cluster going right here, landscaping, and then the driveway, and then some additional landscaping across this side.
And then he's got the fence on the upper side.
Mm-hmm. Other than this.
Mr. Perro, your fence was going to be right on that border between you and Sierra?
No, it would be on the upper right corner.
So it's going to be on the National Grid side?
The Sierra Building will screen his backyard coming up that way, and coming the other way down Mill Street.
On the other boundary that's between you and Sierra, would you be objectionable to a fence maybe from the road 30 feet back or something?
No.
Just to help block, you know, when they're looking all the time up that way and so.
Yeah, I think the landscaping has.
It's going to do a pretty good job.
20, what's it, what's the setback, 20 feet?
It's to the building, it's 27 feet.
So I think if we put the fence up, it's going to end up being at the corner of Sierra's building further back. We wouldn't want to block the sightline or traffic or anything going in and out of either driveway, Sierra or this property. So I think the landscape kind of fills that in from the sightline without blocking the view of coming in and out of the safety factor. I think the Sierra one's only 15 feet off the road, maybe 20.
The Sierra building's much closer to the road then.
Yes.
Doesn't show well on that plan, but it is.
Yeah, the right of way is wider.
But if I understand, you're looking for a fence sort of after the landscaping stops towards.
The property line is right here.
Right.
You know, I.
No, it's to the right. It's to the right. That's a.
Is the property line?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
If it wouldn't block sight view, and it will to a degree, just the shot section up from the road coming back.
From right there back.
Right there, right.
I think that's what he's talking about, from there toward the bottom of the page.
No, I meant from there towards.
If you go up toward the street, you've got to block the sightline from both driveways.
Sierra's where a lot of trucks come out.
So, okay, we'll just leave it with the landscape.
Right. It's going to block the sightline enough.
Question, yeah, through the chair. I understand that, Mr. Perro, I know the neighbor already. You purchased the land from the neighbor.
Darren.
Right, so, you know, we have to kind of look at this from 100 years out. He owns the property in the future, and is someone else going to?
You know, I have no idea. Darren's kind of maybe 15, 48, and still going and growing, and I don't know what his intentions are.
I mean, just for your own security, your well-being, I would consider fencing that side anyways, because you never know in the future who your neighbor could be.
In the future, yeah, yeah.
Something I would strongly consider or advise. The other side, you have a natural screening from a transformer station. I don't think there's much to worry about.
You're not going to open up in the back? Is that woods you're going to dig where it goes into the.
There'll be a significant vegetative buffer. You won't see it from 20. Can't see it now.
Mr. Carlson?
One last thing, sir. The sewer line, as far as I know at the present time, hasn't been plain put forward, and that does concern me also upon coming down the street and taking out a bunch of trees or digging up the street. I don't see it as.
Well, you're not putting the sewer line in, are you?
Yes.
Oh, you're putting the sewer line in from Milbury Street?
Yes, all the way down. We're putting a force main, it's an inch and a quarter pipe.
All the way down to your property?
All the way down to my property, and I have to connect to Sierra property and abandon his septic system. That's part of the project.
But you're not going to be in this, where are you going to put the four-inch force?
The sewer, the force sewer is going in the shoulder of the road. It's not, it's going to go in.
Not taking out any trees or anything?
Nope, nope. We are going to be going around, I think, three larger trees. And if we have to go a little bit out into the paved area of the road, we can. We have permission for that, just to go around.
You brought this before the sewer department.
Bill Coyle and the sewer department. And 90% of this, almost 100% of it, is in the shoulder of the road. And again, it's only an inch and a quarter pipe. It's not a large sewer. It's force main, so it doesn't have to have gravity. It can go up and down.
Inch and a quarter?
Inch and a quarter pipe. It's got an ejector pump going on the property, it's an E1 pump.
That's the line in the street is inch and a quarter?
That's the line I'm going to put in the right of way. It's not in the street where it's paved. It's in the shoulder of the road, and it just services.
And that'll take sewage from both of these properties?
Yeah, because Darren will have to purchase what they call an E1 pump. We'll put that in at his property, and he'll connect into the pipe that I supply. I'll have an E1 pump, and it'll pump up. It'll actually, if there's anybody further down and they want to connect from that point of Darren Sierra's property line, I'm going to leave the stub right over. They can connect as well down the road if they want to.
So other people could tie in at that stub and continue it on?
Correct. Same with the house across the street.
Now, it doesn't go on to Route 20?
No, it doesn't, because there's.
Are there sewer lines in 20?
No, I don't know. I know there's one on, on Milbury Street, I think it is.
Yeah. That's probably 1978.
Yeah, it's back the other way. There's a manhole in the corner. It's off the street. We don't have to go into Mills, Milbury Street either.
Has that been approved?
Has that been approved by the sewer?
Ken's talked to.
This plan that's been brought forward in front of Bill Coyle and the sewer department and at the, was it the DCG?
We talked about it at DCG as well.
And they were all.
But has it been approved?
Mr. Chairman, it wouldn't have to be approved at this, at this stage. One of our standard conditions requires that applicant to abide by all conditions of approval for all of their town boards and commissions and departments, so that condition will cover that. We're comfortable. It's been well vetted. I mean, there was discussion about the trees and making sure you go around those. I think there's a note on the plan to that effect. Sizing and everything's been discussed.
John, do you want to speak to that at all?
My last question is inch and a quarter pipe. Do you have two buildings on it? Both ejector pumps go out at the same time? Each and a quarter going to handle that?
There's two inch on it.
It's two inch.
I thought you said four inch was.
I said inch and a quarter.
I said inch and a quarter.
I'm pretty sure I didn't talk about this.
Four inches is the line size.
Well, two inch will probably handle two E1s. If anybody further up the line, that line's going to have to be a large possibly. I don't know.
I checked with the E1 people, and ejector, an E1 pump, each individual pump can pump up to a mile without having a problem in the.
Well, it's not the pump capacity I'm worried about. It's the force main capacity I'm worried about. So if you're all, say, down the road, there's two more lots that tie in. They want to put E1s in. You've got a two-inch line, and you all, all four E1s go on at the same time. I don't think a two-inch line's going to handle the force. I don't know.
How many other people?
Excuse me, excuse me.
Bob might know.
These pumps with two-inch lines can handle 20 houses in subdivision, three-bedroom houses. What we're proposing here is two systems that are equivalent to a one-bedroom house. You could put 10 more of these systems on.
I think what we're just touching on is that if it's going to be in the street and we're going to dig up anyways, why not put one that's of adequate size that could accommodate it?
Correct. That's all I'm asking, that it's adequate size for more than just the two.
Because we have something similar on West Street.
High-pressure pump. It pumps 30 gallons.
It's not the pump, it's the capacity of the force main.
It's ahead.
I don't care about the pumping. I care about the capacity of the force main when you have four or five E1s go on at the same time.
We can speak with DPW about.
I'd want, before we.
If they have some reason to.
I'd want to have Bill, the sewer department, and you bring up those points.
Well, even so, we're talking about a construction detail at that point, and if a amendment has to be part of an ASBIL plan when it's submitted, that can be done and vetted through the permitting process, and then an ASBIL could show it larger pipe if that's the case.
I just want to make sure if we're going to do that and dig up the road and.
I think we had a problem with that on West Street, with the buildings on hard scrabble and that, and I'm not sure if they put one in and it wasn't adequate, and then they had to go in and do it again and.
Mr. Perro, I know you mentioned already, it's going to be the shoulder. They shouldn't have to go into the roadway at all.
Right.
Within the right of way, but within the shoulder.
You said there's one little spot where you might.
Yeah.
If I can't get around the backside of it, then they said I could go around the front side of it, which means maybe a quarter to in the pavement area. If I had to, I could, only because it's right on the edge. I guess the road was newly paved in the last five or six years or seven years by the state.
So it was part of the conversation. They don't want the road dug up, and we get that.
Anything else, Mr. Carlson?
No, sir. Thank you very much.
Nick?
No.
Scott?
No, any comments?
John?
No, not, just that everything that was discussed today that we haven't seen is properly presented and approved before we approve any other stuff.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just reflecting what we talked about. The plan for June 26 that we hadn't received yet and reviewed despite the peer review comments being favorable for the project, I still want to have that plan in possession. I know the, through the chair, I know the Conservation Commission was anticipating the peer review, the final letter before they make a determination, and which was forwarded to them yesterday. So typically, we usually have their approval before we approve a project, so.
Conservation?
Yes, in case there's any changes to the plan. I'm not sure what you foresee if you've been to them yet, otherwise. We've been before them. I wasn't at the hearing, but Ken speaks out. They were favorable.
And they continued because of the decision the night before to go to peer review.
Sure, right. The issues they'd be concerned about, how close you are, and, you know, none of that's changed. The building swapped sides from beginning point. We were on the left-hand side. Now we're on the right-hand side as we're looking at that plan, but that was all presented to them at the last meeting, I believe, if I.
Yeah, also Sierra Electric had done some work on his property years ago, and actually Bob was a designer, so that's why it got bought, because he had already done the conservation work for Sierra Electric. And it's basically the same, same thing that he did back then for me. Not much has changed. I don't think so.
Delineation was approved originally by DEP and Conservation. So are you looking for Burton to update their letter based on, based on the revised plans to knock off those open issues? I mean, there's not, there wasn't really much on there, and if wanted to condition the approval on satisfying this letter, maybe no problem with that. Mr. Chairman, I assume that the plan is just a matter of sending it to us. Our peer review consultant has already remarked on it being satisfactory in their opinion. And if the board had any conditions they wanted to add, such as that fence on that side of the property, that could be a condition of approval. That's fine. I don't really have an issue with conditional approval. Typically, we wait for conservation, but just being the next day, the board could, we still have to wait to sign a decision on the 10th anyways. So if none of those things fall into place, then we can come back and reopen the hearing and have further discussion. In the meantime, we could take action this evening.
What were your things specifically, John?
Just to make sure that the sewer main, force main in the street, not only has the capacity for the two E1 pumps going in, I know the pump could pump forever.
For any additional residences or buildings down the street?
If there's five more buildings that go up there, they want to tie into this two-inch line, is it big enough to handle the capacity of five E1s? That's my only question. I don't think it's other than this. Other than that, I don't have a problem.
So, and there was some things that, was there something missing on the plan?
Unless the board wants to request a fence that had been discussed, then that's it.
How do you feel about the fence between Sierra Electric? Nick is our first meeting with us, so.
Putting him on this, Bob?
Yeah, I'm probably indifferent on it. I don't think, I don't think the trees they're alone is enough, so, yeah.
Scott, the fence between Sierra and the building?
I'd say recommendation at best. I think the point that was made, that you don't know who the neighbor will be in the future, you allow equipment, you might want to put one up in the future, but I don't think necessarily.
Yeah, you can put it up when you want. John?
Good fences make good neighbors.
Agreed with that, yeah. 30-year-old royal, so, yeah. Fences make good neighbors, John.
I would recommend. Despite being general industrial, I think it's kind of a rural area anyway, so I prefer actually, I prefer having all landscaping over fence, less construction, less hard surfaces to make, because aesthetically it looks better.
Now, I'm indifferent, because it doesn't matter to me, because you can put the fence at any time. I mean, you're always going to, you're going to own it, so if there's a problem, you can then put it up, but there is credence to the good fences and the good neighbors themselves, and I think maybe we'll let them figure it out. So, Nick, what would your preference be on a fence? Yes, you?
No.
No, no. Yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Either way, a fence isn't going to require modifications, I can't argue.
Okay. Any other public comment? So do we have a motion, close the public hearing?
Make the motion to close the hearing?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to approve the project with limited conditions, and then we'll apply construction hours?
Make the motion to approve with limited conditions?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It was a vote. Good luck, and just remember you've got neighbors.
So, construction hours here at 7:30? So, construction hours, Saturday, 7:00 to 3:30, Monday, Friday, 8:00 to 12:00, and no work to be performed some days.
Some days, or holidays.
Does that work for you?
Yeah.
And I'll draft up a decision and advance to the next meeting, I'll touch on some of those items that we discussed here today, I'll share it with Attorney Broder for editing, and we'll present it to the board at the next meeting for signature. Okay? Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
We have a 7:10 public hearing, the applicant is First Worcester Pentecostal Church, request for waivers of site plan approval to operate a church within an existing church facility under section 3.2.3.3 of the urban zoning bylaws on properties located at 188 Oxford Street North. This hearing has been continued from June 12th at the applicant's request. The applicant present? Rachel, you have the name, okay? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm here with the, there were some, since we're asked to be done, the traffic pattern, and so I have provided that, also the landscaping up in the front, and I've provided that. I don't think there was any, I, there were also, man, should I mention the concerns of the engineer, the town engineer?
I know there was a concern about staff parking, and when they're all 30 across, how does, the last guy, how do the people get out if there's no opening?
Right, well, the, the, the two, actually, there's 34 spots, and what I'm, what I'm proposing is 32 spots, so the two spots is one in and one out.
Yeah, and one, if they're exactly nine foot spaces, it'll be kind of tight, it won't, it's not adequate. You probably have the, there's three, three on the, on the, on the front row, and split the difference and make them at least, you know, like 15 feet or something like that. I think that'd be adequate, John?
Oh, if you give up two spaces on each side, you're all set.
Yeah.
You know, it's 18 feet each end, it's plenty of room, make this one, it's wider than most driveways, you only got to be 12 feet, 10 feet for a driveway, legal.
Matt, was there...
More than half. The other concern, the other concern was the traffic, one in, one way, and out the other side.
We were going to come in on the lower driveway, and then on the north driveway, and go out on the south driveway.
Correct.
Coming in here on Auburn Street.
Yep. The other thing that the engineer, town engineer pointed out was the fact that the building doesn't have a sewer line, and of course, we would have to put one in.
Really? Yeah, Mr. Chairman, these...
There's no water line, no sewer line.
Really? The line, the line is in the street, it's just not tied in.
The line is there?
The line is there, it's just not connected to the building, correct.
You mean, there's a stub in the street?
Correct.
Far end?
Well, it may not be a stub in the street.
Yeah, there is, I already checked in.
Is the stub into the property line?
Well, the stub is coming from the street facing the property, but it's just there, they never...
It didn't tie from the building into the stub?
Correct.
Yeah, but if that was put in in the late 70s, that service should be to the property line, for the sewer, it should be.
I got the paperwork from the sewer, they showed me, I got a picture of it.
I'm not sure if the huge tree that was there had anything to do with it, not putting it unless they had to, and the concrete and the steps that were out there and everything like that.
If there's a stub or a Y, there should be a tie card from Facebook and Fortnite on that. Can the town...
Oh, here it is. Yeah. And... Yeah, the stub is, you see, it's right, this is the building, and the stub is right there.
Yeah, you're to the property line. That comes in, you're already off the road.
Yeah.
So you're off to dig into Oxford Street.
Yeah. They just not connect, they had the septic tank, so they're never connected to it.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, just reflect on some of the questions that still remain with the project. First things first, the plan doesn't have an engineer's stamp on it. Now, the stamp was applied to the first page, which is the structural plan that we reviewed at our last meeting, it wasn't applied to the second plan.
And I think we spoke to that.
Yeah.
John questioned them.
Other piece, if you can allocate, it's circulation for the back parking lot also, pavement markings or even striping is something that should be done, but you need a consent from the church in order to do so.
And I think we spoke about, we maybe just advised the applicant of having a contract with the church, and writing for the parking and the access spaces.
Mm-hmm, sure. ADA parking was another comment from the engineering. Now, we understand that through the non-conforming use, that something you can do, something you can't, but handicap requirement is still a state requirement, can't be denied by them. So, there's some little spots need to be labeled, handicap, or ADA compliant, I think they're too far from the building, there has to be certain proximity to a ramp, so they may have to be allocated somewhere else.
You're...
The handicap.
Right, there's, there's two right there.
Yeah, there's several right here.
Right.
Four.
And their entrance is going to be on the side of the building, if I'm not mistaken, right, so they can put the handicap ramp on the side of the building.
That would be something, because at this point, you don't have that, your agreement is for the 30 spaces in the back, or 34, but not for any on the adjacent side of the driveway.
Matt, can you meet the ADA compliance easement? I'm not aware, our compliance officer would have to answer that. That's something going to happen, we'll get...
I don't see why it wouldn't, because he doesn't have the parking anyway, he's got that by agreement in the back, so if we had to get agreement from the church, which I don't see, from St. Joe's, I don't see where they'd have an objection to letting them use the four handicap spots, there are even two of them, because congregation's a lot smaller than St. Joe's, and they're not going to be there at the same time, so...
And these need to be under agreement?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, with St. Joe's. Another item, the aisles that we mentioned in the back for parking, if that's going to be one way around and one way back the other way, but if you take two spots from each spot, it doesn't have to be one way, I would imagine, you just, people can go in whichever way.
As you look in at them, I'd say you'd have, if we're going to have two on each side, you'd have, you go in on the right and come out on the left or something, it should have some kind of an arrow, or else they'll be crisscrossing, and they're not going to have a...
And they'll come out.
Do you have a 24-foot aisle?
See, they're going to come out this driveway here.
That's it.
It's right next to the intersection. They do it now, if you have a crossing here, you have to paint.
Yep.
So, circulation pattern signage, so probably one-way sign here, one-way sign out, possibly with a do not enter sign, these things that can be conditional.
So, we talked about right-hand only, but that would help police or...
It's unimpossible.
Yeah.
Yeah, just like the driveway at Old Riley's.
It's a suggestion.
My, oh, it's going to be a...
I see the guy go in that driveway today.
Saw a big truck going in.
Yeah.
So, through the chair, Mr. Gonzalez and I have been discussing some other issues in the building itself, and I know that's not necessarily this board's purview, however it has put a strain on whether or not this project can be economical for you or not, and one of those things could be deciding on the building, may contain asbestos, it doesn't have to be removed, can it be painted over or something, you may have to go over with the building.
Those shakes probably contain.
With the building department, so, and speaking with Mr. Gonzalez on the phone...
But I think if they stay up, or if they cap oval siding...
If you don't touch them, you don't have to remove them.
Right, you might be able to side over.
Again, it's not, it's not really this board's purview for that at this time, so one of the recommendations that I have, for the applicant's benefit for that matter, is I'd almost want an answer for that first, obviously you do, before you want to pursue this project, and in the board's interest, I'd almost rather that Mr. Gonzalez has an answer to that first before we issue a site plan approval for a project, could find out that, we issued a site plan approval, which is good for two years, and find out that it has asbestos, and he has to, and they give up on the project.
Cost of remediation.
We have a two-year plan that someone else can move in on, so...
I don't think you have to remediate the shakes on the outside of the house, I think you can cap over them.
That'd be Kaleb's thing, right?
Yeah, so, and I know Mr. Gonzalez has been trying to reach out and trying to connect with, with those town departments, so with a want to look at this time, so I just think the additional time to get in touch with them to help them make a full decision on this would benefit both parties.
Inside the building, well, it didn't have a sewer line, but it had to have heat, so that associated heating and, like, might have been steam piping.
I don't know.
That probably had some asbestos.
It was, it was oil tank with the air, the air, force air.
Probably, well, not had that asbestos.
Right.
Excuse me, Matt, what is the concern with the asbestos and not giving approval?
Okay, so if, for some reason, we're to grant approval on this, and again, there's still some changes that need to be made to this, as far as I can see, if we were to grant this approval, and then the applicant determines that it's not economic because there's asbestos removal, that's incredibly costly, and we still have a two-year accepted site plan approval plan for any future use, so wants to move in without being able to modify. Now, we know that we're granting this based on what's proposed in front of us now, but a different style church could move in with more patrons, and they're using an approved plan to do that, so...
Is that different from any other approved plan that someone could sell?
This is a recommendation put together by the town engineer and I for this project.
I don't see the difference. Anyone could sell a project while it's approved, I don't see why it's different in this case. And if there's a uniqueness because of asbestos, that would land to another planning issue, then I can do that, but approve any deal, I can sell tomorrow.
On a practical sense, and I know that's just a matter of putting a stamp on the plan, we also would be approving a plan without a stamp. And, yeah, we can't do that just out of bylaws. That's minor, but still, something we can't really do, because I have to cite this plan, and I can't.
Along with the stamp, if he gets the okay from Kaleb, then he can either cover it, paint it, leave it alone, and we're good to go, as long as he gets the plan stamped.
Yes.
Or if he wants to side the building, and he can go over it and leave it encapsulated, and if you encapsulate asbestos, you're outside.
Right. I would like to get more information from the owner of the property, Father Bamba, on ADA compliance sharing, parking, the traffic flow pattern, if he approves that also, because we are making these changes on his property, and I'd love that in writing, we don't know that he's agreed to them, correct? Those are my reasons for...
It's a good idea.
At least, probably at most, one more meeting.
Because of the almost.
Just, I was just going to speak out of turn here, we're not trying to deter this at all, we're just, actually, we're helping, trying to protect you, along with the neighbors in the, in the St. Joe's church.
Correct.
We'd love to have you come in, believe me, get that building fixed up, make it look nice, it'd be awesome.
Yeah, so, don't worry about that.
Like I told Matthew, so far, we are willing to, we hope, we'd love to do this, if there's a problem with the siding that has to be, asbestos has to be removed, that would be, that would kill the deal for us, that would be too costly.
That could be costly, because you're going to encapsulate the whole building.
If it's asbestos, maybe cement board siding, we don't know.
I do have, I do have somebody from, I do have somebody checking into, into it, was supposed to look into it and see if it is asbestos.
It's easy to take a sample of them.
And then, and give me an estimate, worst case scenario, if they had to be removed, they're going to provide me with an estimate, but I have a feeling that it's going to be out of our...
Make sure you ask the question if you can encaps, you know, if you can re-side it, you know, and...
Or just paint it and leave it, please.
Or paint it.
My, my question would be, who at the town would answer that for me? Caleb?
Well, you could, you could contact an asbestos remediation company, and they should be able to tell you if you can side over asbestos shakes, because I think those shakes historically contained asbestos.
Well, that's just, that's just it, Mr. Chairman, it's not necessarily the building inspector's responsibility to do this, naturally, or typically, the applicant would have a consultant do this sort of review, and then our commissioner would review that. Now, if they're willing to do a site visit at the same time, I would, that would probably save you a lot of time, but to say, continue to get in touch, I think a lot of folks are unanimous in the idea that they would love to see this building rehapped and made into exactly what you're proposing, myself included, just have to protect you, town, neighbors, St. Joe's, as Mr. Regan pointed out, so it's a, I don't come off saying these things as if it's rules, but I'm excited for the project also, I just want to make sure that we're doing it the right way.
Your PE should be able to tell you whether you can encapsulate or paint whatever.
Or know how to find out easily.
Call a CDP.
He told, he told me that he didn't deal with that part, so he, he's connected me with somebody that does, he's supposed to look at it and tell me.
Whenever he schedules that, through the chair, he recommends that he tries to coordinate that with the building commissioner at the same time, just so that he has the eyes on it, and he'll know in the future also.
Make them fully aware.
So, just to review, Mr. Chairman, agreement with the church on ADA parking, we could condition signage for regresses, that's something that needs to be added, the driving aisles to remove, four spaces, two on each side, so you have driving aisles to get through those two parking areas.
We have some arrows which show in or out, maybe.
Pavement markings.
So it's like, almost like one way in and one way out.
And for Father Bamba to agree on the new circulation pattern, in addition to the ADA parking. And if this ever goes to sale, it hopefully does, your attorneys would have to work out easements for access, and so that's not something we need to do here. Those, those are the notes I had, spoke to, trying to pick one of the engineer's office, we shared a lot of the same concern. Anything else?
Scott?
No, just that Jason's point was very good, but for the, I mean, I really need to see the St. Joe's signing off on the traffic flow and the handicap spots.
Oh, was, he was right, I mean, but still, there was a whole bunch of other things that...
Yeah, those pieces I think need to be in place first, and again, like we said, it's for your benefit to know what's going on with this project. Also... What's up?
What's up?
So, recommend...
We have a motion to continue the hearing to...
Our next meeting's July 10th.
Make a motion to continue the hearing to July 10th.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Set that and assign one of these personally.
But, just, just for the, for conversation's sake, is there anything additional the board sees needed here at all, so that we'll...
No, it seems that you've probably had quite an enlightenment since the first day you thought about it, so, and, you know, most of what, as John said, we're trying to help, and this is kind of a different thing than we normally do. So, we wish you the best.
Thank you. Absolutely. Just to continue to the... Sorry. I'll get in touch with your engineer on these things directly, just to make sure that it's. Is he traveling?
He's back, he was, but he, he was supposed to be back tonight.
Yeah, yeah. I'll get in touch with him. Otherwise, we'll say it's true.
Thank you. Send an email with all the stuff that I have to do, because I, I get back next Thursday night.
Okay.
So, it'll be Friday that I'll be.
Okay.
Contacting Father Bamba.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Have fun.
Thanks.
Okay. We have a seven fifteen applicant in the public hearing. The applicant is Masad Family LLC, requesting modification of a site plan approval under section nine point four point one of the urban zoning bylaws for parking, landscaping, and site layout reconfiguration on property located at fifty-four thirty-five. This has been continued from June twelfth at the applicant's request. Is the applicant or representative present?
Gonna say the next week, the last four months, we're waiting for the state.
Today he told Matt, today he told Matt.
Free beer tomorrow.
Don't hold your breath.
Today he said to Matt that the, the owner told him, told him, he did. Is that the engineer?
No.
No, I'm sure it's.
No applicant, a rep?
Uh, I was expecting an applicant or a rep from Diamond, and that individual is not here to be here this evening.
So, why don't we do?
It's continued from June twelfth, and this is June twenty-sixth. The next meeting is July tenth, and we just want to continue to July tenth, and do we need an extension?
We don't need an extension, Mr. Chairman, but I would recommend we continue the meeting, but also send a letter to Mr. Masad, specifically requesting their attendance at the next meeting.
On July tenth?
Yes.
And we can continue then, and we're okay if he has, um.
When does the clock stop?
It doesn't, in seven hours, so long as they're signing continuance forms, but the last two, they haven't. So, now we can send the letter directly, and if they don't attend the next meeting, we have, we have authority to deny the project.
To deny the project?
Yes.
They haven't signed the last two continuances, so, are we, are we all right?
It can be done based on them not being in attendance. The board has two options, you can either continue it based on not being here, or you can deny it on the spot, but usually you send out a letter first, requesting their attendance, and then if they do not attend, then you can take action. Most recent update is that we're still waiting on the state. Yeah. This is a real special circumstance where they can't do anything with their property until they own it, because they're waiting on the property transition from us. So, if we were to deny it, it's kind of shooting ourselves in the foot at the same time.
We've been through it too long. We definitely at least send the letter, and then, then respond as to what they demand.
Correct.
So, do I have a motion to continue the Masad, uh, Family LLC?
I'll make a motion to continue to the next meeting with.
July tenth.
To July tenth, with a letter going out to Mr. Scott.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. We'll wait for it. It's so important to them. We go for the little kids, sometimes some of the kids don't have anybody. Off to the school.
So, they're responding to the.
Can they stay with us?
Yeah.
Did someone say that you work at the bank?
I work at a bank, yes, yeah, I work at Webster Five.
So, will we get the same discount? Jason has extended to us?
Absolutely. Just run it up the chain, I don't know, you know me.
You want some Savers Bank pens?
I got, I got pens for you, I don't worry about that.
Don't, it's like feeding a stray dog, don't.
He complained about my pens in the other bank, but he used it every week. He didn't even have one.
Well, in bank, we have a lot of, I catch myself, and I'm using all the bank's pens, because it's just come up along the way, so.
Which branch are you at, Nick?
So, so I'm the mortgage sales manager, so I manage, uh, all the loan officers at Webster Five. So, I'm basically everywhere, but I'm most of the time in Webster and Auburn, Shrewsbury.
Okay. So, I'm not the one on Channel Street every day.
Every day. There's not a lot.
Huh?
Closets.
Yeah.
Is this, is this your last meeting?
Why do you complain about that?
That's why you're so quick on the second.
Are we outside?
Yes.
Okay, seven fifteen, seven twenty, public hearing. The applicant is Pakichog Farms LLC, a definitive subdivision plan for a seven lot, excuse me, subdivision, in construction of a new roadway with Stormwater Water Management located at seventy-one Curtis Street. This has been continued, has been asked to be continued to July tenth at the applicant's request.
Make a motion to continue.
Do you want to say anything?
I'll continue this.
Sure, I just, I just want to make a point that there is an abutter here this evening. The, the board can, uh, take comments from the abutter here this evening prior to, uh, continue, if you'd like, just so that his comments would be on record.
He's come, so.
And speaking with Mr. Sullary, I mean, he won't be able to attend the next meeting. I think it's important to get his concerns up today.
So, Mark Sullary, the Curtis Street. This is the third time it's continued, and been here each time. It's been on the agenda each time. I'm not around on the tenth. Ask the board if they can push it to the next meeting, which will be scheduled twenty-fourth. Sorry to be here.
I don't have any objection to that, if the rest of the board's okay, because we continued it on the applicant's request, but it's, it's over a two-year thing, and then we, when I came back, we, uh, had, we were, we didn't have, even have him reapply.
Can we do that?
We can. He did, he did continue, or put in writing his request to continue to the tenth. One of the concerns I have is, um, I don't, Rachel can't be here on the twenty-fourth for minutes, and I'm questionable, well, we'll find out, but, uh, if I have to, I can be here. Concern I have is that puts us real close to the deadline for the project, at which, at that meeting, we may be looking at rendering a decision, only because we're that close. I'd almost rather recommend we continue it to the tenth for, to review plans, and to collect more public comment at a future meeting on the twenty-fourth at that time. But I think we should at least do the tenth first.
You say we're close to time.
In August is our date, and.
With, to, so that he can't get constructive approval? I mean, is that the time we're looking at?
Yeah.
You mean, if we miss the tenth, that he could get constructive approval?
No, here's, uh, so, we need a meeting in which we render a vote, and then a meeting in which we sign the decision, because they have to draft this. I'm assuming that would be signed at the August meeting.
We're gonna only have one meeting, we said we were gonna talk about that.
We have at most two more unless you.
In July, we're gonna have just the tenth, we said we were gonna talk.
Right, that's what I was determined.
So, how can we?
Go with the next request, whatever you think is the most appropriate, what do you want to do?
Fine with the tenth for now, but knowing that I'd like to still get Mr. Sullary's comments at a future meeting, just to keep that in the board's mind, that when we do hear anything from Mr. Intellie on the tenth, perhaps we provide video minutes to Mr. Sullary, so he can comment, and we can answer the meeting on the twenty-fourth.
Is that fine with you?
It would be like to speak to somebody face to face. I think that, as you said, it's been going on for well over two years, um, we've been doing the same thing, continuances, and not getting, um, I think that not being here, kind of pushes my legs away a little bit, and my neighbors, well, most of my neighbors are elderly, um, and I kind of speak for them at this meeting, and, um, I'm not available on the tenth at all, and this is like, said, I've been pretty religious to showing up here every time he says, uh, come on, and he's been pretty good about canceling the blast minute.
Can you talk to him, so that, see if, and then get signature, any, uh, extensions we need, to see if he's willing to extend to the next meeting?
Okay.
I mean, and, uh, I would think that he would have no problem.
Sure. In addition, and speaking with Mr. Sullary, right, before we open the hearing, um, I'd also provide him a, a copy of the latest plan set this evening, and any written comments he can provide us would also be appreciated. Now, that doesn't mean we don't wish for him to be in attendance at a meeting in the future, but any written comments would also be appreciated.
We don't want to restrict any of those rights to anybody, especially, you've been here faithfully, and they've extended, and we were very gracious with them, and I didn't, we didn't even have him reapply. You know, they just, they didn't have to reapply. Yep?
Yep, and this is their, their modification.
Modifications, but we didn't make him go through everything all over.
Uh, essentially, it is the same thing, but we did waive his application fee.
That's what I'm saying. Continue with the tenth, that's what I'd like to do, is continue to the tenth with Matt asking, requesting from the applicant that he would agree, when he can get him on the phone, that we continue to either another day in July, if we do have a meeting, or to the first meeting in August.
For abutter's comments.
Just let him agree to, uh, yeah, for either just the abutter's comments, or for whatever, we'll keep the hearing open, or to just, don't come on the tenth, and, uh, have the whole, the whole hearing on it.
I think we need to get through the plans on the tenth, but I think we should reserve this gentleman's right.
Yeah.
And any of his neighbors to come in here and make comments after that meeting, I mean.
Before we make a decision.
What, five continuances?
He has the, his rights at that time, though. He's got a hundred and thirty-five days from the end of the session.
Right, but what rights do the abutters have? Don't they have the same?
Not exactly the same, they have the right to make comments at the hearing.
I'm wording right. I'm not an attorney, but I would kind of be concerned about us delaying the project for, even if it is, I agree with you a hundred percent, it's still not a, it's his right to continue this as long as he wants. If we run into an issue down the road, I could see him having an issue with us. That's something that I would want to keep.
Right, because we'll have the right to vote on whether we continue or not.
Right.
Correct.
We could actually have that right, right now, tonight.
Really?
I always say we want a second peer review with the changes that have been made to, so.
Yep.
It's a double-edged sword, he's traveled down the road with you.
Okay, have a motion to continue it to July tenth?
Will you make that motion?
All those in favor, a second?
Second.
Scott, second, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Is, are, excuse me, are you gonna submit that back to Matt?
Yes, we're changing.
Could you do me a favor, when you make your comments, make them in red, so they're easily found on the plans?
Um, I'm gonna have to actually type them, and I'm not gonna be able to, um, I'm gonna leave Friday, so, I'll do this again.
Okay, I appreciate it. I just try, I just want to make sure we get all your comments, that's all.
Yes.
Just want to make sure we get them all.
Okay, we have a seven twenty-one public hearing. The applicant is Urban Planning Board, request to hold a public hearing to discuss potential rescission of definitive subdivision approval in accordance with M G L Chapter forty-one and eighty-one W, and Urban Subdivision Rules and Regulations, Section six point three for a subdivision known as Pakichog Farms, seventy-one Curtis Street. This has been continued from May twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, per the applicant. Now, we're on the, uh, seven, uh, possible revision, rescission of the decision of the Pakichog Farms.
Shouldn't, I shouldn't mirror the vote, we just thought to continue on the same day.
But did he request to have that continued?
No, this one's ours.
Make a motion to continue to July tenth?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Day signatures, number discussed.
I apologize, we should do something there. I circulated a decision for the billboards. Uh, for review, if anyone had any questions or comments. I did add something to it since we, um, since I circulated that. Just added a sentence that will put more information in regards to the million-dollar donation. So, in addition to that donation, there was, um, advertising space that would be made available to town, and a, uh, eight by, uh, four by eight freestanding digital sign.
That's always ours.
Yeah, that's been part of, that's donation agreement the whole time.
That's the portable four by eight?
Yeah. I just added that into, I just added it in there. We've already signed the page, just wanted to circulate it in case there are comments.
Associate member vacancy, well, we have Nick as associate now, but will probably be full-time next week.
Extending associate.
I just wanted to make that formal, so, our new associate member this evening is Nicholas Lynch. So, Nick has been a lifelong resident up Auburn, so a town meeting member and a member of the zoning bylaw review committee. And Nick, do you want to speak to your experience as a business?
Um, yeah, so I've been in, I worked in, uh, financial services since two thousand and five, um, so I've worked for Bank of America for about ten years, and for Webster Five, for the last five, I work, uh, directly one-on-one with, you know, consumers, that sort of thing, uh, in mortgage business. And, uh, like Matt said, I am a lifelong resident, uh, sit on the zoning bylaw review committee, uh, and then also as a town meeting member since, uh, two thousand and fourteen too, so.
You currently on the zoning board?
Yes, uh, zoning bylaw review committee.
Oh, bylaw.
Yeah.
Welcome aboard.
Thanks.
And I would also like to thank Jason for his impeccable service.
Thank you.
Good luck, you're always welcome back.
I'm missing.
Also, I want to echo that sentiment too, Mr. Favors has been a great member of the board, uh, since, since his arrival here, um, and they're certainly gonna miss you as well, and, don't be a stranger, if you have any comments, this project going into your house, and you want to be an abutter, please, please come by.
You have to bring your little girl along.
She's sitting next to you. But thank you very much. Prom, thank you.
Okay. Nominations for a reorganization in July.
So, I left this kind of open. Typically, um, at our next meeting, we would rotate from vice chair to chair. Since Mr. Favors leaving, we'll be looking to promote someone directly from member to chairperson, unless Mr. Brooks would like to continue as chairperson. But in the manner in which we've been rotating that since two thousand and eight or so, maybe, maybe a little later, two thousand and ten, um, I was curious if anyone wanted to nominate them.
2010, I was curious if anyone wanted to nominate themselves, or even nominate someone else for chairperson, if anyone's interested in being chairperson.
I don't object to staying for another few months, or six months, or something like that, but then maybe Wendy Split, or whoever's next, John would, is John next?
I'd volunteer for vice chair.
Is anyone looking to become chairperson? Just think about nominations, you can talk amongst each other, just not as a group email, but if anyone's interested in it, just let me know. Otherwise, at our next meeting, in order to start the meeting, we have to take a nomination for chairperson before we start our order of business.
Well, I nominate John Reagan for vice chair.
We'll do it at our next...
Oh, we do it at the next?
Yeah, I just wanted to open the dialogue now.
Just nominate John.
And it'll start as nominations for chairperson, and then vice chair anyway, so...
So do we have to renominate Ron to be?
If he wants to be chairperson. Someone could always nominate him in a second, you guys can rule him, but I'd like to make sure he wants to do it first.
If he doesn't want to do it anymore, I'd be more than happy to do it, but that's up to you guys.
Oh, fine, either way.
No, let me, please.
You guys have a couple of weeks to mow it over.
All right. So, that's... July meeting schedule? Said we wanted to try to keep it to just one meeting on July 10th?
If possible, we'll try to work stuff out with the butters for Curtis Street, and try to, try to get as much information together as we can. I'm even gonna try to reach out to him tomorrow, and Mr. Sullary, at the same time, maybe we can collaborate together before he leaves on his trip. But otherwise, as Mr. Favre pointed out, it's not something that we have to mandatory give, but the butters are absent all the time. But at the same time, you know, he has been here at every meeting, even when that's been continued, and his comments in writing would certainly be appreciated, too. If the board wants to send a courtesy, great, but that's why I recommend that he puts his comments in writing in advance for our next meeting anyways, and that's...
But still, at that meeting, we, or prior to, you could talk to the applicant and see if he's willing to just continue at all, we can have him, he can either continue at all till the next meeting, or he can come in on the 10th and do his part, that we're gonna, that we would still want to continue to an additional hearing so that he could be present.
He could also, if he had the butters' comments, he could address all those comments for the July 10th meeting, correct? Wouldn't that be the ideal situation?
That would be the ideal.
Put his baby to bed.
So then, would the next meeting be August 2nd?
14th.
And we have two meetings in August, or just the one?
We can decide at our next July meeting.
Depending on the volume.
On the 10th, look at it, and decide if we add a number, you know, we got the 14th?
It's possible, everything we have is closed off by the 10th.
Because those are heavy vacation months, and...
Yes. For now, we're at least having the 10th, so I'll keep that on the next agenda on the list.
Additional content? Anything for me?
I do have one request, same request as before, we have some vacancies. Would you like to elaborate on these? We have a vacancy for the WRTA.
Can I?
Of course.
I can speak.
Of course you can.
The Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, which is, I think it's like a quarterly, you're on it, I just gave a tease back, they need two new members, because there's only two. So if anybody was right along with planning, and if you want to explain a little bit more about what they do, we're looking for people who are interested in...
We're talking four meetings a year, at most. One of them included is preceded by golf, if anyone's interested in that. But these are held at various locations, usually at Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, sometimes it could be at a different town. You can learn about different transportation projects throughout Worcester County, some of them that may even impact Auburn. One of the meetings that took place recently involved the WRTA cuts, and the bus line schedules, one of the fleets was in Auburn that was proposed to be cut because they're up against the budget deficit. So different transportation projects, you can be invited to also get meeting information on it, and invite to certain other types of workshops, but it's valuable if you're into that sort of thing, it's certainly helpful for Plinywood members, but Jason was one of those members, short term, just after Mr. Weaver was a member, so...
And you're also welcome to stay, I'm sorry.
Yes, that's true.
You're also welcome to stay, if you want to, it's four meetings a year, but I also didn't want to just...
It's a great networking opportunity, also.
If you need people, I'll do it. I mean, honestly, it's informational, it's not like it's destructive, you don't, you're not getting anything out of it, it's really just informational to bring back, so if you need somebody else to do it, or if somebody wants to do it, do it.
Okay.
It's not going to seem to be a proactive, constructive thing, it's just more of a guide information.
Yeah, correct.
Sorry, I'm sleepy, well, thank you.
If you know anyone else who moves into that sort of thing, send them our way.
Usually people select trains.
Yes.
Okay, minutes of 5:22:18.
Make a motion to approve the minutes at 5:22?
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes of 6:12:18.
These went out just recently.
We'll continue those the next meeting. Next meeting is July 10th, 2018. Any other comments by anyone? We have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.